All right, Mike moves second, seconded by Jason James. All in favor? Any opposed? It was unanimous. Thank you, Bob.
Well, I'll support that piece.
Okay, very good, all right. We have support of that.
Don't ask for anything else.
All right, if that's the case, now we need to move this ordinance as proposed.
No, I don't think you were finished.
Oh, you're not finished?
Did you do a public hearing?
You didn't do public hearing.
Oh, sorry, I thought we'd been through that already, all right.
Well, staff, are you done?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, well, in that case, we'll open the public hearing. We did take that amendment out of order, but it is for the record, we made a recommendation on that. So the public hearing on this item is now open. Anyone wishing to speak to that is invited to step forward, state your name and address for the record. Remember, now we're addressing the land development regulations.
Good evening, my name is Jesus Ramon, 12785 Cypress Road.
My goodness, Jesus, I must change my glasses, I did not recognize you.
That's okay.
Cataracts, you know, it's a little foggy out there.
So, great to see a lot of good friends still in the commission. So I'll just make one quick comment, and that is that I'm, two comments. One is, I'm glad to see so many of you still on, because it brings a lot of history. So a lot of you have seen this, been to this rodeo before. I certainly was here when we did it last time. So the only comment I will make, both for this and one other item coming later on, is that this commission has always been focused on the intent of what we're trying to do. Not necessarily in all the technicalities, staff is great at that, and, you know, quoting this, and the legal department is very adept at that. But, for example, what you just did, we had this discussion eight years ago when we first did this, and I was sitting on that side of the dice, and we discussed this, and if you remember, downtown looked like a pyramid, in terms of heights. We actually debated this many times, we had open forums, we had all those things around the city, and we decided that we did not, as a city, wanted to have a single-family home with Thompson, and that was 110 feet, so it used to go, single-family, one-story, 30 feet, 60 feet, 80 feet, 110, and then there were some other units that you could get. So my only comment is, if you could please look at this in kind of an organic way, say, hey, what do we want with development? I agree, we want development, but there's a couple of things in there that I see, for example, that we had big battles and got decided, the 500-square-foot limit on the minimum size, it's in there, which we all agreed after putting tape on the floor, as you remember, at those meetings, when people talking about New York and all that. So how did we get back 500 feet here? When we know that created a lot of traffic issues, we discussed all that. So, to close, please continue your great work of looking at these things, not necessarily from a technical point of view, but what do we want as a city? Do, that's how we arrived at that plan, and hopefully you'll make those same great decisions again. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesus, nice to see you. How's your wife, by the way?
Great, thank you.
Wonderful, sir, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to this? Last call. I see no rising cloud of dust, I see no, I hear no thundering hooves in the distance, and therefore, this public hearing is closed. All right, now, gentlemen, we've already had one recommendation to resolve the conflict between policy and ordinance relative to stepping back from the residential in a graduated way. If there are no further comments, the chair would call for a motion on the ordinance.
So move.
All right, Kenny moves, Mike seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Bob?
No.
All right, this is three, this is six to one. All right, that carries, thank you. All right, now, let's do PC 8-19. Say 30, we're doing well. This is an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of North Miami, Florida, providing for text amendments to Chapter 29 of the City of North Miami Code of Ordinances entitled Land Development Regulations by admitting Article 7 definitions, providing for repeal, conflict severability, correction of Scrivener's errors, and for an effective date. Staff report, please.
Yes, sir. All right. I'm playing Vanna, I don't have my Vanna tonight, so, playing Vanna, so my apologies. Okay, again, for the record, my name is Debbie Love, I'm the city planner, and as you noted in the ordinance, we're looking at how height, building height, not just height, not height, but building height is measured. And we'll pull up the PowerPoint. And while we're waiting for that, this came, a lot of discussion, and came from a workshop, a community workshop that was held, and this item was discussed. Also was a number of, I'm going backwards, I'm so sorry, my apologies. There we go, is, the way height is currently measured says it's from base flood elevation to, if you have a peaked roof, to the midpoint of the roof, if you have a flat roof, it's to the top of the roof. And there are some, currently in the code, it allows a certain items to go to a maximum of 20% above that. And so, through many discussions with some of the contractors here in the city, staff, we had a workshop, and out of that has come this recommendation that I'm presenting to you tonight. Darn it. Okay. The way this reads now, or the proposed change, is that it goes from to base flood elevation plus one foot. And in R1 and R2 districts, the consensus of the workshops, and of that workshop, was that in R1 and R2, let's don't have all of these other things above, that can go above the height. Let's limit it to elevator equipment, not elevators. Let's limit it to solar arrays, and by law, we have to allow the steeples, and we've modified that to say on religious facilities. So that's clarified that that's what the steeple is for. And then, we created a cut-up, a separate line that says in other districts, other things, because in commercial buildings, you'll have things like cooling towers, especially on these larger, like, university buildings or Home Depot, you'll have cooling towers and other equipment. So, and then the other piece of this is, that's important to know, is that it doesn't, it now speci, there's language specifically that says that in no event shall any of these exclusions allow you to have any habitable or living space above the height. So while you may have this mechanical equipment, or flagpole, or whatever, you can't, it's not a habitable space, nor is it a usable space for like an outdoor kitchen, or something like that. That's not the intent. So we tried to close a couple of loopholes through this, and so staff is presenting this to you today. And I know, Mr. Pashon, you were there at that community workshop and participated. And after tonight, it's going to, scheduled to go to city council for first reading on June 11th, and second reading June 25th, and it will become effective 10 days after it's adopted.
All right, that concludes staff report?
Yes, yes, sir, thank you.
All right, then let's open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this item is invited to step forward. Going once? Do we have a speaker?
Gail Cornblum, 12785 Maple Road, "Thank you all for the workshops, the meetings, the time and attention to this problem. I have some photographs of the house in Keystone Point that I think gave rise to all of this controversy. And for anybody who hasn't seen it, the first photograph is taken from the top of the bridge on Bay Shore Drive, and I will pass these around."
Pass to Marlene, if you would take those.
Marlene, grab those, please.
Okay, when this first came up, and we realized what was happening there, the next-door resident and I requested a meeting with the city manager and the head of planning. The first things that we were told is that we should become friendly, because we can go have great parties on that roof. And the next thing we were told was that, if it makes you feel any better, the person in planning who made the error and signed the building permits has been terminated. It's the second time that we've heard something like this. We heard it with the perpendicular docks, and then we heard it with this house that is so enormous, with no setbacks at all on the side, other than what they need. The people on both sides of them are living next to a huge, sharp, concrete wall. And I just would like to say, when I started reading about what can be permitted on a roof, I researched elevators all over the place. Elevators no longer have equipment rooms on roofs. Elevators today are all pneumatic, and the equipment is self-contained. So I would like to see elevators eliminated from that list. Solar arrays, I'm very much enthused about, but the new solar arrays that are coming up are coming up on tremendous angles. My husband and I just did a driving trip across four states, and it's unbelievable what some of these solar farms look like. So that could be an issue if you go up for the full 35 feet, if that's what's still in your recommendations, and then go further, it'll be another 10 feet that, no? Okay, maybe I'm misinformed, but the solar panels that I've seen are elevated on angles. And I just want to say that I am very, very appreciative that the flagpoles and all that came out, but I don't think there's any reason for elevators to stay in, and I just thank you all for everything you do.
All right, thank you. Do we have anyone else wishing to speak to this?
Karen DeLeon, 1935 South Hibiscus Drive, "I've watched that house go up that we're speaking of. The neighbor is here, whether she'll speak or not, I can express her emotion of how negatively this house has impacted her quality of life." Basically, what we were talking about before, about like, step-ups from a single-family to a 200, 200-story, she's next to a square, it looks like an apartment building at this point, and then we brought, then they built that little room on top, whatever you want to call it, when I thought it couldn't get any worse, it's now painted pink. That's astonishing to me. I do hope that you will take staff's recommendation on this one. Eventually, I do think we need to talk about how you step it back as it goes higher, and once again, please excuse my lack of correct knowledge on things. From that meeting that we spoke of, I did understand that it was 35 feet, period. That was the consensus I took away from it, that elevators no longer needed an elevator room, that one of the problems with adding the solar array concept was that solar arrays now could actually be put up, I'm going to use the word, like, tiki style, that they could actually be on poles and create a living space, so to speak, create an area. So if solar arrays were going to go there, I would think they would need to be flat in some way, as opposed to elevated. And I do appreciate your taking the time to help us maintain the concept of a single-family community, because this has really taken away from it. Thank you.
Okay, do we have anyone else? Jesus, are you planning to convert the rooftop to a religious institution and build a steeple?
That's a whole other discussion.
Oh, Jesus.
Jesus Ramon, 12785 Cypress, "I will just make a similar comment, and I have a question for staff on the actual numbers. So if I understand correctly, you can do base flood elevation plus one. So let's, around the city's about eight or so, so nine feet, and then you can do 35 feet, plus another 20%. So, Kevin, to use your property, think about you being surrounded by places that are 42 feet high, with seven and a half feet setbacks, and either side of you on the back. I think those parties would not be as much fun. So please go back to the, to what I said before, and be reasonable. Does it make sense to have somebody build a structure that can be legally 42 feet next to your house? Remember, we're saying that in commercial locations, we want 30 feet. We just had that discussion, right, on the different overlay districts? You have single-family, and you can only do 30, but yet, for this, you can have 42 feet. That makes no sense. So I would appreciate if you guys kind of think again about the intent and how you want to live, and not necessarily, by the way, just because somebody has the money to build that doesn't mean they're, you know, they have the right to just do whatever and build, you know, 10,000-square-foot home. So thank you very much again for all the work you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesus.
Mr. Chair, if I may make a clarification, the structure itself will never be at anything above 35 feet, if that's the height limit. It's only those components, either the solar array can go up 20%, and if it's a 35-foot, that would be seven feet, and we had that discussion at the workshop on solar arrays. And if they wanted to put it up higher, they couldn't, because it's capped at that 20% max of the height. So in these districts, it's 35 feet. So the structure itself will never be
Higher than 35?
Bigger than, higher than 35 feet. After you get the base flood plus one, and then the structure begins. So the only thing that goes above it would, in this case, would be the solar arrays and elevator equipment, not the elevator. And the elevator equipment isn't the room, it's the piece of the elevator equipment.
What was envisioned is the winch in the old days, when they used to pull it up, but...
Exactly, exactly, because not everybody is using, I'm sure that in, that was the part of the conversation we had at the workshop, was to assure that we didn't have elevator rooms going on the top of the houses anymore.
Well, I do understand the comment about hydraulics now. Most elevators are pushed, not pulled. And I don't have any problem eliminating the elevator tower, because nowadays, all your elevators use push systems for, if they're going up, not, you know, two or three floors. So you don't have any above-roof structure on that. I, that, to me, is perfectly reasonable, given changing technologies.
And staff certainly has no objection to any change that you all want to recommend. This is specifically out of that workshop as to what was winnowed down. Not this, not this, not that.
Okay, sir.
Stuart Cornblum, 12785 Maple Road, "Debbie, your definition of structure and mine are totally different."
Okay, sir.
"We strongly object to anything over 35 feet. You can call an elevator, you can call the flagpoles, you can call the, anything up there is a structure. It's not just gravity, it's a structure. It's built, it's part of the building. I strongly recommend that you limit it to the 35 feet, and nothing above that. There is no reason to be above that. Thank you."
Thank you, Mr. Cornblum.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak to this? Reluctantly, yes, sir, well, come on up, this is your opportunity.
Albert Mendez, 2141 Hibiscus Circle, "Yes, I agree with some people that I think you guys should definitely look at the staff's recommendation. This is really a clarification, and this is what I do, I build, and the way it's written now, or not with this change, it's basically, you can pretty much get away with anything. So this is only really more of a clarification, so you cannot get away with it again. The way it's written now, you can basically put anything you want up there. So if you want to put a living room and call it a storage room that's 20 by 20, you can do it. You basically can do whatever you want. Granted, the height issue, agreed, this is what I do. Elevators do not use machine rooms anymore. They don't, none of them. Not even the vacuum ones, which supposedly are the high-tech ones now. So that we have to allow certain things. If you allow the solar panels, well, they have an extra six feet to go up, that's a 20%. You'll be at 40.8 feet. Really hard to get someone under a six-foot area unless they're five-foot midgets. So granted, we still like the 34 feet being maxed out, but the way we're doing it now, at least we have a cap. The way it's written before, it opens up a lot of gray areas as to flat roofs, the way they're measured, because there's not clarified in the way that was written before. So basically, we can have, basically, if, single-story, I mean, flat roofs with parapets that are six and eight feet tall, and still get away with it. Just the way it's written. And it's more of a clarification thing, the way it's, the way we're trying to at least make a guideline for everybody to follow, so we don't continue to have things like this come through, and, well, it's a gray area, and the way it's worded, they can get away with it. It's like everything else. You can always word something to make it to your advantage. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to this? Anyone else hearing none? Thank you, the public hearing is closed. Now, Bob, you've got special knowledge of this, so I'm going to turn to you first. There've been some very good points made. Can you, do you have recommendations that you'd care to make relative to this ordinance?
Yeah, I mean, the problem was the problem. I mean, you see pictures of the pictures, in this case, don't do it justice. The problem is much greater than, than, when you stand in front of this thing, you go, what is that? I mean, there's a third room upstairs, there's a room upstairs. And however that happened, you've got to go talk to somebody else.
Yeah.
Because this stuff has been done in the past. But right now, I think this works, in that essentially, as I think I'm hearing, elevators, equipment, we've limited elevators, and elevator equipment is no longer needed on the roof, so that kind of goes away in and of itself, and we could probably strike it. So the only thing that's left is solar panels. I would be reluctant to remove solar panels. I mean, we, as a city, are trying to go greener, and if we've got people with the ability to put, to create some solar power, I think that's probably conducive. And it still has to fit within the space. Everything else is not allowed. Nothing else can go above the 35 feet. And the, a sentence that says in no event, I'll paraphrase it, that you can't, you will allow no habitation or use of the space on the roof. So it can't become a storage room, it can't become a bathroom, you can't use it or live in it. So if you can't use it, you can't use it. And I think it's reasonably, it prevents the problem that we've got right now.
Okay.
With the, with the height, it's just gone out of control.
All right.
You can't, you can't put a deck up there, or...
You can't use it, period. That's what we're saying, you cannot use it.
As long as, let me make it clear.
I'm sorry?
That as long as it's under 35 feet.
It can be.
You can't, as long as it's under 35 feet, because there's nothing that says that you can't, that it's the height. And now, these are the only appurtenances that can go above that height. So if they jack it down some, and then they want to do something else, so just to be clear, that that doesn't completely prohibit it, as long as it stays under that height.
You could put a, you could put a deck, Kenny, on top of a one-story house.
Okay.
But right now, if you've got a two-story house, you might as well have it. I mean, you're not stopping anything. You've still got people at that height, but you can't have any occupancy or use above the top of the house.
At 35 feet.
Above 35 feet.
Above 35 feet.
Correct. And the only thing we're allowing with this language is solar panels.
Well, I mean, this is, you're bailing, I know this house, when I walk through, I see the house from Keystone Boulevard, I believe, I can see it over there, by the bridge. That's pretty, that's pretty big. I mean, that's...
It's an ice hole.
Well, it's this big.
Yeah, somehow, I think the design review aspects of our city really failed miserably on that one, but, you know.
So, Bobby, you're satisfied with this ordinance?
I mean, again, we've capped, we, the height's the height. We know where we're measuring it from, so that's where it starts, right, and it's a floodplain elevation, and we know where it stops. And you can't have 35 feet for a flat roof, and then put a fence around it. That violates your 35, that violates your excess. So 35 feet becomes 35 feet, and anything above that is unusable.
Okay, so you couldn't put your solar panel on top of it, if it extends?
Your solar panel can, you've got 20%, which is seven feet.
Your solar panel, and that's about the only thing that can go up there now, right?
That's the only thing that can go up there.
Right, so that is assuming the commission votes to strike the elevator equipment.
All right, so that's the recommendation. We would make that recommendation, we'd take a
Strike the elevator?
Motion in second to strike the elevator equipment, just so we're consistent with that. Yes, Mike, go ahead.
In PC 8-19, I move approval.
Well, let's get the recommendation first.
Okay.
The recommendation is to strike the elevator equipment. Do we have a second on that, that's made by Bob?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Charlie Ernst. Further discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous on striking the elevator equipment. Now, by the way, Mr. Held, you wanted to chime into this.
Yes, sir. So I think it's important to hear from staff on how they interpret it, how they interpret the variance rules and procedures, as it might apply to this section. Though if somebody wanted to have something higher than 35 feet, add something that wasn't a permitted exclusion, or even exceed the habitable height rule, how that would work. And a separate issue would be, is there a legitimate hardship? But you don't have a pure hardship-based criteria in your variance, you have like a four, six rule.
Doesn't become a hardship.
So it's somewhat...
Right.
There could be a design element, too, which is, that's not, if a guy wants to put, like, steeples on each one, corner of the house, or something like that.
No, that's not allowed. The only thing that goes above the 35 feet is solar panel.
Right, all right.
Assuming you, since you've all recommended that.
Well, because he was starting to bring up variance issues, we got to make sure that...
Our code has, every code has an opportunity to request a variance for, from the literal interpretation of the code. They would have to prove a hardship, and then there are other conditions that go along with that. And so, they would go before the Board of Adjustment, and before they could even get there, staff would, what is your hardship? What is the hard, what is the hardship here? So, the code allows that variance process for hardship, particularly for hardship cases. And so they would have to prove that. And then they'd have to go before a public hearing to get approved. If the appeal is denied, which staff would not recommend approval unless there was a hardship that they could readily prove a hardship, and it would be very hard to do that, because you can't prove a hardship if it's something that's specific to your lot, but it's not applicable elsewhere, and you can't prove a hardship that says that it's something that everybody else in the neighborhood is doing, that's not a hardship at all. So staff has talked about this internally, and we are of the opinion that it would be, I never say never, because there are situations that come up that you cannot ever just say never. They have to go before the Board of Adjustment, and staff most likely would be hard-pressed to recommend approval. And we generally don't take things to boards that we don't support. So it most likely would never see the light of day. They would have to appeal the denial to the zoning board of appeals, which is the city council. So, again, it's a public hearing process, and there's no guarantee ever that these things would ever be approved. And to get past staff would be challenging, let's just say that.
And I respect that, and I think that's good. And Mr. Held and Ms. Love, out of the blue, it occurred to me that there, and this is perhaps just an esoteric conversation at this point, if we turned this around the other way, and, and the city took possession of the air rights beyond the 35-foot height limit, and said, you're not allowed... and said, you're not allowed to encroach on the city air rights, that's actually, that's been done in one of our New England states, in a city to try and deal with this McMansion concept. And what they did, they gave the, the local town, whatever the name of it is, exclusive ownership of the air rights over these structures, so as to not permit anyone to build into municipal territory. And that was how they, they imposed a cap on the height. Yes, they had the building height business, but as was said, you got enough money, you can find a way around it. And so what the city did, they took ownership of the air rights over these structures in the districts, so that you could not build into the city property.
Can you let me know which city so I can go represent some property on that?
Well, I, I could.
It sounds like a taking.
Well, well, you know, not if they're limited to thirty-five feet, you see. It was a way of imposing a ceiling on that. Interesting concept.
One question I would like to ask, can we restrict flagpoles?
Yes, yes, yes. Because the, the flag code says that your flagpole has to equal a cer, based on the certain size of your flag, it's then a certain height.
There's a ratio.
Yeah, there's a ratio in the United States Flag Code. And for the most part, you're looking at them in residential districts, they, many cities cap them at thirty feet. And we're, that's one of the reasons why we just struck it, because it is something that you can control, but the flag code just simply says you can't tell somebody they can't fly a flag, but you can make it, you can cap the height.
Okay.
Okay. So...
Antenna?
What's your antenna?
There's multiple kinds of antennas.
Shortwave radio antenna, for example.
That's why you don't see that in other districts. Cell phone towers are a different animal that we can't control. The thing that in our code, on cell phone towers, is primarily co-locations. And you'll see the, that they do a lot more stealth now on these, instead of the big gigantic new towers, they do stealth by attaching it to something else.
All right, so we have the recommendation on the, the elevator business, and we've approved that. So now we approve the ordinance, essentially. And Bob, do you wanna make a motion on that?
I'll move, I'd move to approve the ordinance.
Oh, sorry, Mike, well, all right, well, Bob approved, Mike seconded, or whichever. So all in favor on the ordinance?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. All right, so we're up to our last item, and it's nine o'clock. PC nine one nine, nine dash nineteen. An ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of North Miami, Florida, providing for text amendments to chapter twenty-nine of the City of North Miami Code of Ordinances entitled Land Development Regulations by amending Article Four, zoning districts, and the official zoning map to establish the Special Development and Transit-Oriented Development Overlay District, clarifying the bonus density allocation provisions, providing for repeal, conflict severability, correction of Scrivener's errors, and for an effective date. Staff report, please.
Yes, sir. Again, for the record, Debbie Love, city planner, this is the implementation of the, this district that was adopted back in, darn it. This is like, there we go. All right. Back in September, council, you all, made the recommendation to the mayor and council to adopt the Special Development Transit-Oriented Development Overlay. And this is the implementing regulations. So this established, this, this particular ordinance says before you does a couple of things. So let's start with the district itself. The district regulations are limited to two hundred feet, inclusive of parking in this district, a hundred and fifty dwelling units per acre, a minimum dwelling unit size, again, of multifamily for five hundred square feet, and the lot coverage of ninety-eight percent. And additionally, in addition to establishing the district itself and the regulations for that, it also, we were asked to take a look at the bonus unit criteria. The criteria we had before, those bonus units, many of them were already required by code. And yet, somebody could say, I'm going to do bikes, and the, the code already says you have to do bikes. And so, but, okay, so I'm gonna give you five units for bikes. Exactly. So that was a perfect example. Bob and I have talked about that since I've been at the city, that, that's just crazy. So at first, we looked at modifying the table to make it more resilient-focused, and to, because currently, the table, the max in the tables that are in the code is up to ninety dwelling units per acre. So anything over that, there's no criteria for how you would even achieve the hundred and fifty units or the hundred and twenty-five on any of the PCD corridors. So we were looking at expanding them, at making it more focused on resiliency. We were then asked to simply delete those tables and just take some of those things that weren't in the code, and there were very few of them, and actually just fold it into the LDRs to make the sustainability and the design section more robust. Because right now, in the PC, if you're in the PCD outside of the NRO, there is absolutely no criteria for those bonus units. So staff negotiates hard with the property owner when they come in for an application or project to try to get them to do more things, more things that the city would like to see, more resilience, you know, more design, but there's nothing there. So we then leaned heavily on the sustainability section and the design section. So by doing that, but taking it a little bit more robust approach, you'll see that we have amended five eight oh two and five eight oh three. And in five eight oh three is our sustainability section. Five eight oh three, we had worked with Mr. Kishon and his floodplain committee to take a look at how we could modify those tables and make them more resilient, you know, more resilient floodplain preservation and protection. My phone is making all kinds of noises, my apologies. And so by folding in some things that we felt were critical to us, which is the low-impact development and the sustainable landscaping to encourage, right now, if you are on a major corridor, or if you are requesting density bonuses, you have to do eighty percent native vegetation. It's, it's less than that otherwise. So we thought we'd just beef that up to a hundred percent native vegetation. And if you have native trees, you need to, to the best practicality, you need to work around those trees so you don't destroy our canopy of these native trees. And then you also have to put trees, pave to have trees put elsewhere in the community, because we have a tree, a, a tree master plan, and we want people to pay into a fund to actually choose where we don't have trees. So that's another requirement there. And with that, that explains staff. We have, on second reading, we'll have first reading at City Council on June eleventh, and the second reading on June twenty-fifth, and it will become effective ten days after that. So we're very excited about having this finally come to you. It took a while because we were talking about this whole issue of the tables and how to make it more resilient. And so with that, that's the end of staff's presentation, and I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Well, go ahead, Bob.
Well, go ahead, do what you wanna. I've got, we spent a lot of time talking about this the other day, and I, I've got a, I've got a conceptual issue that the path we went down, we have a, we have a, currently, what exists, is we have a standards, right? And the zoning standards say, this is what you must do, and this is what you can do within the zoning districts. And then we have a, we have a table that says you can get bonus units for doing other things. And where I think we had a problem, or certainly I did, was that it became kind of perfect attendance awards. You didn't have to do anything, you just had to show up. And we were, you know, you have to have bike racks, so we're giving you bonuses for bike racks. And it was, it was pointless. We were just figuring out a way to give developers bonus units, and getting nothing out of it as a city. So the, the direction that Debbie was directed to go into was do away with the bonus units. And as I explained to her, I think all we did was rearrange the deck chairs, because we said, well, here's things you've gotta do, and these are the standards. And if you do those, you get all these bonus units. And the things you had to do were what we used to give you bonus units for. So we just moved them from door number two to door number one, and then we gave you the bonus units for doing them. But there was no table of bonus units. My recommendation is, look, I, I ran businesses for years, and when I, I did compensation programs. And with a compensation program, I paid people a certain amount of money, and then there's a bonus for achieving things above and beyond. And I think that's what we want. We should decide what we think buildings should have in two thousand and nineteen in the city of North Miami. And those become the standards. And that's the building standards. You have to have bike racks, you, you have to do all certain things. And then what is desirable, that we would like to encourage, that's beneficial to the city, not the developer? I, I, I find that electric charging stations are good for the developer. It's not gonna make me go buy an electric car, but if I have an electric car, it'll let me move into his building. That's good for him. If he doesn't wanna do them, have a nice day. That doesn't do anything for the city of North Miami. But if we give you, we have LEED certification, you get fifteen dwelling units. How about you get LEED certification, you get five. LEED certification gold, you get ten. Platinum, you get fifteen. So we have people reaching for goals, things that are beneficial to us, a more sustainable city. You put pervious material to cover your ground, because we as a city are trying to fight sea level rise. So if you do that, we'll give you bonus units. Don't do it, that's fine. But those are the things we direct people towards doing through a bonus pool. So I, so what I would almost recommend is we table this, because at the eleventh hour, I'd hate to decide what are the important things we wanna give people bonus units for. I think we should look at what we think buildings should be in two thousand and nineteen and beyond in the city of North Miami, which of those things do we think are mandatory or required, quote-unquote, standard? And what do we think we should compensate people over and above for doing? And I think that's a healthy conversation. It, it gets the developer to do something that's not just good for him, it, it suits the city. Whether it's, I mean, maybe it's native vegetation. I mean, every developer's not gonna like it. We've got arguments in Keystone Point, they, we residents have wanted to see more palm trees. And so if the developer wants to put palm trees up, that's fine. If he does native vegetation, which helps us in resiliency, then we give him bonus units. Stuff that's good for the city. And I think that's a thoughtful discussion. It's a different path than Debbie was directed to go down, but I think it's the right path.
You know, Bob, I, I like your logic on that. And I understand that the city planner oftentimes gets direction from City Council for reasons we, we don't need to go into here. But I, I, I think your point is well-taken. We, we've not had a productive discussion on how to award meaningful bonus units. My pet peeve with a lot of our, our current development standards is we're failing to reward, or failing to incentivize open spaces within design plans. All of our developers basically wanna pave over every square inch of land that they buy, and we're gonna wind up like Houston. The water will have nowhere to go.
Yep.
And, and so in, in looking at this, I don't wanna rush this until we've had that discussion. Mike, what's your take on this?
I agree with Bob. I, I think we need to have more discussion on this, and I think tabling is a good idea, Bob. I think it needs to be fleshed out a little bit more, as they say.
Because I think, Debbie, you, a great value add here with your, your group is to go find the things we're not seeing. What are, what are the cities doing to incent people for sustainability and stuff that benefits the city? Because that's what we're looking for. We should be giving bonus units to a guy that wants to build in our town because he does something that's good for the community, not just for him.
And not just try to milk what he can out of...
Yeah, because they're all gonna milk what they can, and it's a question of what we can get out of the deal, and...
And if we're giving additional parking spaces, because you put in our variance where you don't have to do as many parking spaces because you're putting in electrical charge, then...
Well, it's a good discussion, yes, yes.
If appropriate, I'd like to move to table this.
Well, well, let me get everybody else's input before we get to that, okay? Charlie, do you wanna speak to this?
No, I, Bob brought up a good point about that, because there's always been an ongoing problem.
So you're supporting Bob's position, okay?
We're not getting anything in return.
Bob, I sense you may win this one. Kenny, do we have...
I, I don't, I don't have a problem in continuing this.
Okay, Jason? All right, in, in that case, the chair will, will entertain the motion for continuance on this item. And do we have a second to that?
I do.
Bob seconds that, and so does Kenny. And so, yes, Mr. Held.
You seconded also?
Sure. Just a thought, you might wanna give a timeframe, suggest when staff should bring it back.
We'd like to have it back within sixty days, if that's feasible. Now, if that's not, you come back and tell us in sixty days. Look, we really need a little more time, and, and we're cool with that.
Well, that would be, that would put us in, what, July?
Yeah, puts us into July.
And then when we break for the summer, in August. So why don't we bring it back, how about September? That way we have a lot of...
Well, there's, we've got statutory issues to come up on the poll. And I'd like to get this out of the way before we get into the statutory requirements.
Because you have one year from September eighteenth to adopt this.
So...
And I don't mean the first reading, it means adoption.
Yeah.
Well, you have to adopt, I'm sorry.
What is it?
It's a one year from the date that the conference of...
So what is that date?
...adopted, September eighteenth.
So what does that do in terms of City Council meetings? They're gonna be breaking in August.
Right, so this is why this is tightly scheduled.
All right, this has to be in June, then, you got thirty days. You gotta, yes.
Is it possible, and staff would need to respond, because I don't have...
Of course.
A lot of the substance of what's in here, is it possible to recommend adoption of this so it goes forward with the schedule, and deal with reviewing the changes that Bob is proposing as an amendment later on?
Yeah, that would take another year, no...
If I may, if I may respond to that, Mr. Chair? The challenge that we have here with these, with the table and adopting, not having anything adopted, is that as they come through, they'll go with the old table. So we wanted to handle it like we handled the PCD now, is to just say, look, let me, let me put your note, let me put you tight to the, so you want these density bonuses? All right, so now I'm going to put you tight into the design, and putting you tight into the sustainability. And now with these changes, I've actually beefed up the design and beefed up the sustainability section, because we're handling it with, like, the PCD. And that was the idea, that was the whole concept of bringing it like this, was we don't have the tables applicable to the PCD now.
Right, and I think what, where Bob is coming from is, is the, the issue of how to award bonus units, and we don't have a clear understanding of that. And what I would ask that we do is we table this for a month, then, and have you bring it back in June. You can still meet the timelines and get it approved, but come back and be prepared to discuss the bonus issues, because that's not, we're all in agreement with, with Bob on this one. I think we're unanimous that we need to have a lock on the bonus issue business. And I understand why you wanna pass this, and I, I'm sympathetic to the timeline. And certainly, because council breaks in August, this has to be in place by the first meeting in September, which will be hard to do, because it needs two readings, which means they have to read it in July. And so we have to do this in June.
If it's within a couple of days either way, the state doesn't give you a hard time. So even if it went to second... So even if it went to second reading in September, it's close enough to that September eighteenth that they would give us a break on that.
Yeah.
Um, but not beyond that.
Then let's, let's table this and recall it in June, and be prepared for staff to discuss the bonus units question. How are they really evaluated and awarded? We're not opposed to bonus units, but, but Bob is right, this is not two thousand and nineteen. We, we want to be awarding bonus units for things we really need as a city, not for things that they already have to do. So if, if you don't mind, uh, the-
So, so you don't have to re-advertise, it would be, I think, to continue it to the June fourth planning commission meeting.
Right, this would go over to June four, with a direction to staff to come back and spell out for us this bonus units issue and what the criteria is. Because we all have certain things we'd like to-
I won't be here June fourth.
You know, I'm big on seeing green spaces incorporated and award bonus units for that.
That's the third one, I think.
And there are some other things, uh, where I think the city could benefit if we did this. Uh, but the carte blanche bonus units, just because you did everything you required to do, is, is a little too much of a gimme. And, and we need to get something out of this, so-
I, I like the idea what you got in there, Debbie, about the rooftop gardens and that, that type of thing. That, that's important, put the pool on the roof. I won't be here June the fourth, I'll be down in the Keys enjoying it.
But that's a good-
Be mindful, be mindful.
But you know, we need, we need to pursue this, getting the, getting the rooftop gardens, getting the pool up there, doing things like this. These are, these are things that make sense now going forward. And I'd like to have a full discussion on that, so we're, we vote in a more educated way on this one.
Debbie, can you give us an update, what happened to them?
We gotta, we gotta call the question and vote on this. All right, so we've got a, a motion from Mike to table this, and we've set a thirty-day limit, bring it back June fourth. We have a second from Bob Pashon, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, this item is tabled for a month, now, go on.
Debbie, uh-
Yes, sir.
The ordinance that we passed a couple of months ago for drug stores, to regulate drug stores and, and, um-
That got changed at city council.
I don't know if you guys noticed or not.
They, um, decided that instead of making pharmacies special exceptions, that they took away, they changed, um, medical marijuana dispensaries from special exception to permitted as a break.
Okay.
I, I just hope that, um, these medical marijuana clinics don't fall into the things like we had with the pain clinics. And there's a good article in the Wall Street Journal the other day about, I think, Colorado and another state where the traffic fatalities since they legalized marijuana have increased by thirty percent, so. Just, uh, you know, we, we had to say this like a fantasy, but, you know, we gotta see where it's going and do a truthful study, not, uh, wow, this is what I like, and blah, 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 blah.
There was a long, there was a long-term- There was a long-term study that was done in California, because they've had recreational, no, they've had medical marijuana since nineteen ninety-two, or thereabouts. And so they did a, a ten-year long-term study on the effects of medical marijuana dispensaries in the neighborhoods they go in. And they discovered that not only did improve and bring in more businesses into the area, that it, it reduced crime, because they, they, it was interesting, because there's more eyes on the street, I guess. It reduced crime, it brought more businesses to the area, and it actually increased property values. So the concerns, you know, that was the result of a long, ten-year analysis-
In California.
In California.
California's got sixty percent more dispensaries than are licensed by the state.
Interesting.
I'll give you the, I'll give you the article on it. They're just every place, because they can't be policed.
You know, uh, it's gonna be good for the restaurants over there, because they're opening up on one hundred and thirty fifth street.
And Johnson and Wales may have a whole new line in culinary arts now.
You know where the old bank used to be on one hundred and thirty fifth street in Biscayne?
Tiny dispensaries.
That's, there was a bank, City National, I believe. That's gone, I'm walking by there, and I see that, what? And that's, I called Debbie, and that's where they're gonna put their, uh, medical marijuana. Well, it's good for, it's gonna be good for the Pine Crest Bakery over there.
Move to a, move to a juror.
All in favor, we have a motion. Oh, yep, second, let's go. See you all June fourth. You will be missed. Please do, send us some nice pictures.